All right, folks, let me call the meeting to order. This is a regularly scheduled Greer City Council meeting. Called to convene this December the ninth, two thousand and fourteen. Having duly called the meeting to order, I'd like to ask if you will join me as we stand for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
My pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Lord, we thank you for this beautiful day and the blessings that it has provided for us. We thank you for health and strength. We thank you for your mercy and grace and love. We ask now for your guidance and direction as we consider the business at hand this evening and ask that you will lead us in the way that is right for this city. We thank you for the many citizens of this city and what they mean for us and to us and for those that have come this evening to be a part of this meeting. We thank you for their presence as well. We ask that in this season of Thanksgiving and of Christmas that we'll be mindful of the needs of others and that we'll be attentive and empathetic to even the least among us this evening. We ask all these things in your name for your sake. Amen.
Amen.
With that, we'll move to our public forum session of the meeting, a time that we set aside for those that have issues at hand in the meeting tonight to speak publicly. Do we have anybody that has asked to speak in public forum? Ms. Adams?
Yes, sir.
With that then, we will move to the minutes of the council meeting. Council will entertain a motion to receive the minutes for the council meeting from the November twenty-fifth, two thousand and fourteen meeting.
So moved.
Have a motion and a second in that regard. Any items of note for the clerk? Hearing none. Ms. Adams?
Mr. Airwood.
Yes.
Ms. Booker.
Yes.
Mr. Dumas.
Yes.
Mr. Bettis.
Yes.
Ms. Albert.
Yes.
Mayor Danner.
Yes. Council, we also need to consider the minutes of our council workshop, which was held the same evening, November the twenty-fifth, two thousand and fourteen. Entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second in that regard. Items of note for the clerk? Hearing none. Ms. Adams?
Mr. Airwood.
Yes.
Ms. Booker.
Yes.
Mr. Dumas.
Yes.
Mr. Bettis.
Yes.
Ms. Albert.
Yes.
Mayor Danner.
Yes. Council, we have the privilege tonight of recognizing some folks from our community in regards to some achievements that they have made and some milestones that they have reached. And as you can tell by some of them that are wearing school colors and got their jackets on, we are going to recognize those folks for their achievements in regards to athletic ability. I'm going to ask Kate Ambrose, if she will, to join me up front. Kate, we want to offer a proclamation that says that we, the City of Greer Council, recognize Kate Ambrose, who is the Girls 4A two thousand and fourteen state champion in cross-country. Let's give her a big round of applause. This proclamation says that whereas in November of two thousand and fourteen, sophomore, Kate Ambrose won the individual 4A state championship in cross-country while leading Riverside High School to the team and state championship. And whereas this was a historic win, as it was the first time an athlete from the school has won an individual state 4A state championship, and whereas Kate ran a remarkable eighteen oh seven to win the championship, and whereas the championship is the result of Kate's dedication to excellence and her commitment to being the very best, now therefore Mayor Rick Danner and the Greer City Council honors Kate Ambrose, Girls 4A two thousand and fourteen South Carolina state champion, and celebrates the outstanding character she displayed in doing so. We want to present you with this proclamation. Thank you for joining us. We are going to ask Kate, if she will, to stay up front because I want to ask her teammates, the Girls Cross Country Team, to join us up front, if they would please. Ladies, the Greer City Council wants to recognize that the Riverside Girls Cross Country Team are the two thousand and fourteen state champs. This says, whereas in November of two thousand and fourteen, the Riverside Girls Cross Country Team placed five runners in the top eleven and won the 4A state championship, and whereas this win marked their second straight title but is their first in 4A. And whereas coached by Eric Cummings and led by individual champion Kate Ambrose, Riverside also got outstanding performances from Ashley Fowler, Carter Marchbanks, Jesse Crowley, Emma Spencer, both Mikey Harris and Abigail Smith also broke the twenty-minute barrier. Whereas the championship is a source of great pride for the students and faculty of Riverside, the families of the athletes, and to all in the community who supported the team in various ways, now therefore myself and the Greer City Council honors the Riverside Girls Cross Country Team on winning the two thousand and fourteen South Carolina 4A state championships and celebrates the outstanding character the team displayed in doing so. Ladies, congratulations, and coaches, congratulations. We want to present you with a proclamation. Would the Riverside Boys Cross Country Team join me now? Slide around so we can all make sure they can get you in the picture there. All right. This is a proclamation to the Riverside Boys Cross Country Team, who are also two thousand and fourteen state champs. It reads, whereas in November of two thousand and fourteen, the Riverside Boys Cross Country Team placed five runners in the top twenty-one and won the 4A state championship. And whereas the Warriors have previously won eleven state championships in 3A, this was a historic win and their first in 4A. Whereas coached by Eric Cummings and led by seniors Kyle Mook of Riverside, also got outstanding performances from Ben, Neil, Andrew, Evan, and William and Mark, all ran strong races. And whereas the championship is a source of great pride for the students and faculty of Riverside High School, the families of the athletes, and all of the community who have supported the team in various ways, now therefore the mayor and the city council honor the Riverside Boys Cross Country Team on winning the two thousand and fourteen South Carolina 4A state championship and celebrates the outstanding character the team displayed in doing so. Join me again in congratulating the Riverside Boys Cross Country Team. I don't know how often that it happens that you have a boys' team and a girls' team to win a state championship. I'm going to assume that's fairly unusual. I see heads nodding. Okay. I would suspect that it is. To have two state champions in the same area is probably even more remarkable. So Michael Williams, join me up front, if you would please, sir. Greer City Council wants to recognize Michael Williams as the Boys won a two thousand and fourteen state champion in cross-country. Whereas in November two thousand and fourteen, senior Michael Williams won the individual 1A state championship in cross-country while leading Greer Middle College to the team state championship. And whereas this was a historic win in as much as it was the first time an athlete from the school has won an individual state championship. And whereas Michael ran a remarkable, and I do find this remarkable, fifteen thirty-five to win the championship by almost a full minute. And whereas the championship is the result of Michael's dedication to excellence and his commitment to being the very best, now therefore Mayor Rick Danner and the Greer City Council honor Michael Williams as the Boys won a two thousand and fourteen South Carolina state cross-country champion and celebrate his outstanding character as he displayed in doing so. Join me in giving him a round of applause. Now, if the Greer Middle College Boys Cross Country Team will join us. Now, I know their coach, and I'm going to assume that he was an inspiration to this team because I know he never led them around running anywhere, so...
He told me one time if I ever saw him out running to pick him up because somebody was chasing him, so...
Join me in congratulating the Greer Middle College Boys Cross Country Team as they are the 1A two thousand and fourteen state champs. And this proclamation reads, whereas in November of two thousand and fourteen, the Greer Middle College Boys Cross Country Team placed five runners in the top thirteen and won the 1A state championship. And whereas this was a historic win, as it was the first ever state championship in any sport for the school. Coached by David Smith and led by individual champions, Michael Williams, Greer Middle College got outstanding performances from Jacob Chandler, Ryan Christian, Seth, and Matt, and all finished in the top thirty. Whereas the championship is a source of great pride for the students and faculty of the Greer Middle College, the families of the athletes, and to all in the community who have supported the team in various ways, now therefore myself and the Greer City Council want to honor the Greer Middle College Boys Cross Country Team for winning the two thousand and fourteen South Carolina 1A state championship and celebrate their outstanding character as a team in doing so. Gentlemen, congratulations. He's just born a number of years before me. Indeed, quite remarkable when you think about it to have two schools in our community that not only had the individual championship in cross-country, but also to have team winners in that sport as well, too. And always glad to recognize those young men and women, whether it be for academic achievement or athletic achievement, as they represent our community and have done a fine job of doing so. And I found it interesting that the 1A and the 4A were the champions. So little or small, we were represented well across the state this year in terms of ability. Mr. Williams, as y'all were aware, ran that cross-country course in just slightly over fifteen minutes, which was a blazing speed. As you could tell, won the race by nearly a full minute and set a bar that will be difficult for others to achieve. He is quite a gifted athlete, and I am sure we'll be hearing more from him in terms of the cross-country circuit. Well, with that then, we are going to move on to another sort of presentation or recognition, and that's going to be the presentation of our two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fourteen Greer City Audit. And hopefully that is going to be news as well, that we are indeed champions of the audit, and I think we'll recognize that once again we are in that regard. And so Mr. Seifert, if you want to tee this up for us, that'd be great, sir.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We are indeed pleased to present the audit to you tonight. I think as you go through and listen to the presentation, you will find the results very beyond satisfactory. There are some great results we will be presenting tonight. I'm going to let Johnny Britt come and present through the audit. He is the partner in charge of the audit, and then Lee Grissom here is with us also. He was the auditor in charge here on site. So they will be presenting. This is an informal process. As we come across information, you have a question, please feel free to ask that. Of course, if you have a question later, we will be here to answer to you at those that you may have at later time. Mr. Britt?
Thank you, Mr. Seifert.
Of course, as Mr. Seifert said, we're here to report on the comprehensive annual financial report for the year ended June thirty, two thousand and fourteen. If we could turn to page seven briefly, which is the beginning of the letter of transmittals, which is coming from... Everyone does have a report, do they not?
I don't have one. I'm a mid-box meeting checker guy. Thank you, sir.
Again, on page seven, statement from the city administrator and the finance director. First paragraph there, directed to the honorable mayor and the members of the Greer City Council and the citizens of the city of Greer. In accordance with South Carolina law, which requires an independent annual audit of all financial records and transactions of the city of Greer by CPA or accounting firm to whom no personal interest in the fiscal affairs of the city or its officers, we are pleased to present this cap or this comprehensive annual financial report for the year ended June thirty, two thousand and fourteen. Goes on to state that the responsibility for the accuracy of all data presented and its completeness and fairness of presentation rests with the city. Opening statement there. Let's turn to page twenty-seven to follow up on that. On page twenty-seven, middle page there, under certificate of excellence awards, the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada awarded a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting to the city of Greer for its comprehensive annual financial report for the year ended June thirty, two thousand and thirteen. That year was the seventeenth consecutive year that the city has achieved that prestigious award. In order to be awarded a certificate of achievement, a government must publish an easily readable and efficiently organized comprehensive annual financial report. The report must satisfy both generally accepted accounting principles and applicable legal requirements. It is only valid for one year, and again, this report will be presented for that potential Something for mayor and city council to certainly be proud of. Turn next to page thirty-three briefly, which is the independent auditor's report, our audit report. On page thirty-three, looking at the first paragraph there, the report on the financial statements, it indicates we have audited the accompanying financial statements of the governmental activities, the business-type activities, the discreetly presented component unit, each major fund, and the aggregate remaining funded information of the city of Greer as of and for the year ended June thirty, two thousand and fourteen, and the related notes associated therewith. We can turn to page thirty-four now, to our opinion. In our opinion, based on our audit of the financial statements referred to above, present fairly in all material respects the respective financial position of the governmental activities, the business-type activities, the discreetly presented component unit, each major fund, and the aggregate remaining funded information of the city of Greer as of June thirty, two thousand and fourteen. What we're saying here is that we're issuing an unmodified opinion, or a clean opinion, so to speak, as it would have been referred to in the past. Meaning, we feel the information contained herein is fairly stated. We can turn to page fifty-two and get into the financial information. On page fifty-two, we look at the top of the page, the statement of net position. This is like the old balance sheet. It tells us where the city of Greer was as of June thirty, two thousand and fourteen, stating its assets and liabilities and net position at that date. Of course, we have four columns there, primary government, the component unit. Looking down, the assets on page fifty-two, and the governmental activities, we can look at cash, and the business-type activities there, cash again, so total cash of over fourteen million dollars in those two areas. Looking down the current assets, we see taxes receivables, other receivables, inventories, prepaid items, and then due from other governments. So, and the governmental activity is our total current assets, over thirteen million nine hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. Again, in governmental activities, looking down, our investment in capital assets, land and other non-depreciable assets of over four million six hundred thousand, and other capital assets that being equipment and items subject to depreciation of over thirty-one million five hundred and forty-one thousand dollars, for total net capital assets there of thirty-six million one fifty-five. So total assets in the governmental activities area of over fifty million dollars. Looking at the liability side in the governmental activity area, we see total current liabilities, there's over four million thirty-five thousand dollars. When you look at the balance sheet or this statement of net position, you want to look at current assets and compare it to current liabilities, especially cash to current liabilities. So if we compare that thirteen-nine, thirteen million of it being cash in the current assets to our current liabilities, we see we've got over a three-to-one ratio there, which indicates that the city's in excellent shape in its governmental activities as of the end of the year. Looking down below the current liability section, we see long-term liabilities of over eighteen million six oh five. Subtracting the total liabilities there, twenty-two million six forty-one from our total assets, we see our total net position at twenty-seven five ninety-three, twenty-seven million five ninety-three. And of course, that net position is made up of the net investment in capital assets, and then some restricted areas there for public safety, public views, recreation and tourism, and debt service. And then we have the unrestricted net position area of ten million six. And of course, this is an area where the city has a policy of unrestricted net position. And I'm going to defer to the director of finance right now to speak a moment on that, if you would.
Thank you, Mr. Britt. The policy, as you're aware, specifically refers to fund balance in the general fund. The policy states that it is our target having thirty percent coverage ratio of our fund balance to our following year's approved budget. And we are very pleased to present tonight that that coverage is about thirty-six point four percent tonight. And per our policy, when it exceeds a thirty-five percent, then per the policy, the staff is to be bringing recommendations to you of how to best utilize those funds for one-time expenditures, capital projects, things of that nature that are not recurring expenses. So that will be something we'll be bringing to in the spring, probably in the time of our planning retreat. Just wanted to bring that to your attention for our fund balance coverage percentage.
Thank you, Mr. Seifert. Any questions there about the statement of net position, again, in the business-type activities? David, I have a question for David on that unrestricted. So now, our unrestricted fund balance is at thirty-six percent of the two thousand and fourteen, fifteen budget. Is that what you said?
Correct. I guess the key to that area is that mayor and council need to, and obviously management, you need to have a plan. The ordinance, that's what it's all about, having a plan for when indeed it doesn't exceed thirty-five percent.
A question for the auditor. The way I think that all of us kind of backed into that number was from the audits, and I believe your firm and the firm prior to this all said, you know, that's a good number to have, that thirty, thirty-five percent. That's...
a good number to have, that thirty, thirty-five percent, that still...
Yeah, that is a good number.
Okay, as budget increases over time, do you still hold that thirty-five percent? Because, I mean, that starts to get pretty significant dollars, or do you drop that percentage back?
Uh, if, if I'm thinking about the City of Greer specifically, I'm thinking about population growth right now, and I have an idea of what's expected. We're at twenty-seven now, and, uh, we'd be looking at thirty-five thousand maybe, when, Mr. Saifert, is it projected? So, infrastructure's going to be a key, I would think, here in the city. And, uh, so, I, I, I think the thirty-five percent is a good number. If, if we were closer to the coast, uh, we'd be looking at, uh, instead of this being four months right now of coverage, four months, four months' coverage of expenditures, uh, we would be recommending nine months, maybe, and that's due to potential capital situations, so...
David, did I understand you're going to bring us recommendations for how to spend the overage?
It'll be something that will come to the administrator's office, you know, through that, uh, through that direction, that we would at least offer some recommendations. Obviously, the final option is obviously to the council.
If I may interject, Mr. Bettis, I've already been directed by council how to spend that money.
Oh, yeah?
As a property purchase.
Oh, okay. I didn't know we'd already made that plan.
Well, I mean, that's, that's where it would come from.
Okay.
I mean, that's, yeah, we would use, the, the fund balance dollars would be used for any property purchases that we would be involved with, um, because we don't have real property as, uh, resources at that level, so it would come from our fund balance.
And how much money are we talking about?
As far as the overage?
Right.
Well, if we're at thirty-six percent at thirty-five, it's, it's less than, it's, it's less than what we would anticipate using, so we'll drop below. In the next fiscal year, we will drop back below the thirty-five percent if we indeed pursue a property purchase.
Got you. Any other questions or comments related to the fund balance? This just tells us that the city's in excellent financial shape as of the end of June. Let's turn over to page sixty-two and, uh, briefly review the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance, and you can, uh, on page sixty-two and sixty-three, uh, we see the general fund in the first column, and then the various other funds as delineated, uh, specifically the, uh, if you're looking on page sixty-three, the local hospitality and accommodations taxes fund, as well as the public service forty percent fund. These, this is the revenue page. Uh, we can look down, total revenues in the middle of the page, uh, on the far right, the total governmental fund revenue is twenty-three million four thirty-three eight oh four. On page sixty-four, we can view the expenditures associated with those funds. Again, on page sixty-five, on the far right, uh, the total governmental fund expenditures of twenty-two million oh seven five oh seven. So, our net increase to fund balance since past year, again, at a million four twenty-six two ninety-seven. Okay, so, and you ask, a dollar figure was mentioned, it's somewhere around that number, okay, to, to get it down, that, uh, thirty-five percent, uh, thirty-five percent area that, uh, Mr. Saifert was discussing. Any questions or comments there about any of those areas, uh, revenues or expenditures? I know on, on page sixty-seven, we, we look at the local hospitality and accommodations taxes fund, as well, as well as the public service forty percent fund, uh, we can see the net change in fund balance there. The third line from the bottom, uh, we can see an increase in the local hospitality area there of one sixty-three eight sixty-four, and, uh, twenty-five thousand in the public service forty percent fund. Any comments or questions there? If not, let's turn to page seventy-four briefly, just to take a quick look at the statement of net, fund net position of the proprietary fund, stormwater fund there, uh, again, looking at the current assets, which are all, which are, uh, the total assets also, and the liabilities associated with that fund. Proprietary fund, meaning it's supposed to be self-sustaining, uh, so, revenues are supposed to equal or exceed expenses associated with these funds. Uh, we see our cash position at a million four in the stormwater fund, and internal service fund of four forty-two, and then down below, the associated liabilities. Uh, so, we, in stormwater, like, total assets at a million four, and, uh, liabilities at just over five hundred thousand, so a net position of five oh eight in that fund, and a net position of, uh, two thirty-seven in the internal service fund. Again, that just gives us an idea of, uh, of the stability of proprietary funds as of the end of the year. Any questions there? If not, I want to turn to page one fourteen briefly to take a look at, uh, special revenue funds. And this is the balance sheet of the special revenue funds, uh, again, the balance sheet showing assets, liabilities, and associated fund balances. Uh, we can look at, I want to look at the, uh, third column there, specifically, the facilities use fund, uh, looking down that, our cash and cash equivalents, and due from other funds, total assets at two thirteen five seventeen, uh, associated liabilities at just over fourteen thousand, so a, a net fund balance there of just over a hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars. Uh, over on page one fifteen, uh, looking at the, uh, federal confiscation fund, again, the cash balance there at over a million three fifty-four, associated liabilities at, uh, around sixty-five hundred dollars, so a net fund balance there at over a million three forty-eight. And the next two areas there, the highway one oh one corridor maintenance fund, and the highway twenty-nine corridor improvement fund, uh, looking down those assets and the liabilities, uh, only assets there of cash in both of those funds with no associated liabilities, uh, those areas in, uh, in good shape. Any, any questions or comments there? If, if not, let's briefly turn to page one sixteen and one seventeen, and look at, again, these are the same funds, uh, special revenue fund, the revenues and expenditures associated therewith, uh, again, looking at those, uh, areas there, specifically, the facilities use fund, uh, looking down the revenues, over a hundred and fifty-four thousand, expenditures of ninety-one, a net revenue item there of over sixty-three thousand dollars, increasing the fund balance by that amount. And on the federal confiscation fund, uh, on page one seventeen, along with the highway one oh one corridor maintenance fund, again, and highway twenty-nine, getting a look down those revenues there, all with increases in fund balance from, uh, June thirty-two thousand thirteen. Any comments or questions about any of those special revenue fund areas?
Tell me how to read the Greer Real Property Revolving Fund, is that our, that's the HUD money?
In the Greer Real Property Revolving Fund, that fund is used to accumulate resources for projects we're doing around the city. It could be property purchases if we're accumulating resources for that. Most recently, we're using it for the paving at the OC, and the roof replacement at the OC, and Victor Gem, and some major capital improvement projects across the city. So, you're seeing the resources flowing in and out for the revenue and the expenditures for those projects.
Can you explain again what you said it was used for originally?
For this past fiscal year, it was for the paving for the parking lot at the operations center, the roof at the operations center, the roof at Victor Gem, and one other roof.
Uh, roof, I mean, uh, roofly? Jayburn Smith.
Repaired roofly.
Why do we show? Will there be a replenishment of that fund, or that just got...
The negative balance there is a holding for the expenditures that we're experiencing with the hospital, and...
It, it will be replenished with the sale of the hospital.
It will be replenished at that time.
That's the fund that, that all transactions relative to Allen Bennett campus are paid through.
So, that, that balance there shows that, that's the, is all of that associated with that piece of property?
No.
The, the majority of that negative balance, yes, sir.
How much majority?
Hundred to a hundred and fifteen. I'd have to look in the, uh, our financial system to get the exact number. There's some other expenditures in there that will reimburse in this fiscal year that will bring that negative balance down, but the majority is there for the Allen Bennett Hospital.
That's from the one twenty-nine?
It would decrease that negative, yes, sir.
Okay.
That's what, we've always had a floor, when we, anytime we've, uh, we've discussed that property, we know that we have a, uh, we have a basis for that, that's, that's the number that basis is coming from.
Thank you, David. Mayor, that's all I have, unless there's some other questions or comments or information we can provide.
Council, I know it's, uh, a lot to digest in a short period of time, and even though we've had access to, uh, to this information for, um, a little while, it's always good to have, uh, an oversight and some insight, uh, into generally where we are. As you can tell, the, uh, the, the overall picture is, is very good. Um, we'll entertain any questions you've got at this point in time, and, um, if, if there aren't any, then, uh, we will, um, we will, um, certainly be glad to provide additional information or, or answers as, as you, uh, have them through Mr. Saifert's office, or, or Mr. Driggers, either one. Anything else this evening? Follow-up, questions?
I'd like to comment from, uh, Mr. Saifert, just, just so council will know about this certificate of excellence award, uh, what kind of time frame are we looking at for that, Mr. Saifert?
Yes.
After this presentation is approved on campus.
Gentlemen, we appreciate, uh, your effort in this regard and, uh, your work. We're, uh, we're, we're always, uh, always happy to have this completed, as, uh, as I suspect y'all are as well, too, but, uh, particularly when it, uh, is as strong as it is, and I think it's indicative of, uh, of, uh, our staff and, uh, what they do on an annual basis, and Ms. Howell and others that are here this evening, and certainly the administrator, uh, Mr. Saifert and others, as we look forward to another year for, uh, our capra award, and, uh, we thank you. Thank you for...
If I may, if I may, one final comment?
Sure.
If you will turn to page sixty-six, just looking in the very first column, which is the general fund, and we've made note of this already, but the fund balance, you know, a, a ending fund balance of seventy million three hundred and forty thousand, just as an editorial note, that is probably the strongest fund balance position we've had here as a city, certainly in my time here, and maybe in the history of the city, I haven't gone back to research that, but two months ago, we gave you a teaser that we did not think that we'd be needing to borrow money for our tax anticipation note, and I'm glad to tell you tonight, we have not had to do that. So, this is the first time, at least again since I've been here, that we have not had to borrow money for cash flow purposes.
Awesome.
Great. Well, I, I suspect you're absolutely right, Mr. Saifert, because that number is not far off from the number that our total budget was when I came on board, so I suspect that... I suspect you're absolutely right. Thank you, sir, we appreciate it. Council, with that, we'll move to the administrator's report. Mr. Driggers?
Mayor, if I may, just as a matter of record, if we could have the audit received as a matter of information, um, for, uh, for our minutes.
Okay. A motion we received, the audit is, as described.
Saifert?
Have a motion in a second to receive the audit as presented. Any further comments? Ms. Adams?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, when something's that good, we just want to make sure the record reflects it. Uh, we, anytime I have an opportunity to quote an auditor, uh, I, I, I do want to take advantage of it, so let's not forget that the auditor said to us tonight that the city is in excellent shape, um, and those were his words, not mine, um, but I will repeat it, uh, many, many times over the next several months, as, um, as we continue to look at, uh, managing the effectiveness and the efficiency of our city. Uh, Mayor, you, you gave recognition to those folks that, that are primarily responsible for this document, and, and I echo that. Our finance staff, uh, we particularly give credit to, uh, Mr. Saifert, Ms. Howell, uh, the fine folks that are in that department, they make sure that when the auditor comes in and says that our report fairly represents, uh, the position of the city... of the city. That's because many, many hours and lots of work has gone into taking place to make sure that our documents are accurate and accurately presented to our public. As you are well aware, we take great pride in promoting transparency, and this document is available on our website now, so the public can go to the front page of www.cityofgreer.org, they can pull a copy of the audit down, it is available now, and, and we will continue to use our dashboard tools to keep our public informed as well to the financial position of the city. Again, we're extremely pleased with where we are, it enables us to do things like not borrow money for a tax anticipation note, and that is a huge hurdle for us to, to achieve this year, but it is very indicative of, of where we are moving as we are now in that post-recession recovery, in a very, very strong position, and as this community continues to grow, it will enable you to make decisions and use those resources in ways that are necessary for us to continue to move forward. We look forward to the opportunity to spend some more time talking with you about our policy. As you are well aware, I am extremely conservative relative to our fund balance, and so don't be surprised if you wouldn't see a recommendation that we may want to consider, that if we have four months' reserves that we may want to consider, how do we get to six months' reserves, and how those resources will continue to strengthen us and from a financial position. And we'll continue to have conversation about that as we move forward. There are a number of things that are happening for us at this busy, busy time of the year. We know that many of you had the opportunity this past weekend to spend some time with us as we celebrated really welcoming the Christmas season in downtown, it was a wonderful tree lighting ceremony this past Friday evening, we spent the day Saturday with Santa and our entire community in on Sunday for a very large and very successful Christmas parade on Sunday afternoon. If, if members of our community were unable to join us this past weekend, they certainly missed a treat, it was a wonderful way for the City of Greer to usher in and welcome the Christmas season. We'll continue to do that as we move forward over the next several weeks, but several things are happening on our calendars, and we want to make sure that you are aware of those. Thursday evening, again, the Spartanburg County Municipal Association will be meeting over in Spartanburg, a couple of us are going over for that, if your schedule would allow you to attend and you'd like to, just let me know this evening, we'll certainly make arrangements for you to be able to join us for that as well. But then early the next morning, we gather right back here in this place for our annual employee appreciation breakfast, that is always a wonderful treat and opportunity for us to say thank you to our two hundred, our some two hundred full-time and part-time employees that are responsible for the good work that takes place here in this community. The employee appreciation breakfast is just that, it gives us an opportunity to say thank you to the men and women that are our workforce, they look forward to that every year, and I know you do as well, and we'll be gathering Friday morning, so I look forward to seeing you for that event. A number of things that are taking place next week as well, I just remind you that there is a holiday drop-in that my wife and I will be hosting for members of our leadership team and members of council and your guests, so we certainly hope to see you next week for that. Also, on Thursday evening of next week, the Chamber of Commerce is sponsoring their annual holiday drop-in, that'll be Thursday afternoon, so I hope that your schedule will allow for that, and while you're in town, just hang around because the fire department has their annual Christmas dinner later that evening as well, next Thursday evening, and so if you've not yet made arrangements to attend some of those events, let us know, we'll make sure we get you signed up and that folks know who's coming where and when. As we, as we get into the new year, just a couple of items I just wanted to remind you of or have you place on your calendar, and one of those is our annual Martin Luther King Celebration Luncheon, that will be on Monday, January the nineteenth, I'll send you some information on that event as well, and also, I've sent some calendar information to the mayor, and he's reviewing his schedule, and we're looking at our, our work schedule for next year as we're trying to lock in a date for our council retreat, so as soon as we are able to confirm those dates, we will certainly get that back to you and get that on your schedules as well. We're working on that and starting to work on that agenda now as well. A couple of things we've, we've placed at your agenda, I'm sorry, at your seat tonight, a copy of the Risk Management Services, thank you, the RMS Services Annual Report, this was presented to the member cities last month, we had several of our staff that participated in that meeting, but this is our Workers' Cop program and our property and liability insurance program, very, very strong program sponsored through the Municipal Association, they are continuing to function very strongly as well, very strong financial position for those, and we are fortunate this year that there's a return of surplus being allocated back to the member cities, and we're being able to participate in that this year as well. So I provide this to you as information and encourage you to take a look at it. We are members of those programs and have been for a long time, and it's very comforting for us to know that they're operating very strongly as well. I also sent you some information concerning the upcoming Hometown Legislative Action Day, you should have received this brochure in the mail from the Municipal Association, it is a meeting that we typically attend, and we are looking forward to doing that again, but I also included some additional information this year encouraging you to look at participating in the Advanced Institute. All of you are graduates of the Municipal Elected Officials Institute, and last year the Municipal Association has begun a new program for advanced training, for those of you that have done that and have graduated the, the entry program. We wanted to kind of give it a year to see how it kicked off and got started, and, and I am extremely pleased at the success that the Municipal Association has had with that program. It was actually, they had more attendees in the Advanced Institute last February than they had in the regular institute, so that lets us know that it is a very strong program, it has good recognition from member cities across the state, I think you will find that the topics that are being covered are timely, and also, they will not repeat what you learned earlier in the Municipal Elected Officials Institute. So I encourage you to take a look at the offerings for the Advanced Institute, if your schedule would allow and you have the interest, we are glad to sign you up for that, I think it would be a wonderful, wonderful continuing education program, and we'll be continuing to bring you more information on that as we, as we move forward as well. There are a couple of items that I would like to ask council to consider in executive session this evening, one is a personnel matter that I need to give you an update for, will not require any action of council, and then there are two contractual matters that I need direction from council, one is involving a potential property purchase, and the other is concerning a potential property sale of asset that we have of city property as well, just need a little bit of direction from council on how to proceed with those items. That would cover my report this evening, certainly available to answer any questions that council may have, and again, as you continue to review the audit, the finance staff will continue to make themselves available to you as well as myself, it's a very lengthy report, I encourage you to read the transmittal letter, it's a good summary of the entire document, but as you dig into the numbers, we want to make sure that you have the information you need as we move forward. That concludes my report and available to answer any questions.
Counsel?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I want to ask you and the rest of the council to excuse me, I need to excuse myself and the rest of the meeting.
All right, thank you, sir. Counsel, with that then, we're going to move to, well, let me, let me back up just one second and dovetail on something the administrator said, we certainly recognize our financial department, thank you for, for what you do and the strength of, of that department. I know we've got a couple of department heads that remain with us, and indeed, a tip of the hat to, to all of our employees and particularly our department heads for monitoring and maintaining their allotted amounts of money throughout the year, that is oftentimes a struggle and requires tough decisions sometimes in that regard, but they're well aware that as a council, we work hard to, to craft those budgets, and they work hard to maintain those budgets, and for, for our department heads and employees, thank you for, for the part that you've played in helping bringing us to where we are now, it is a testament not only to our administration and to our financial department, but also to all of the employees of the City of Greer, and I think that our citizens need to be aware of, of the fact that we are all conscientious about our budget, and I think that lends itself to the transparency that we're willing to, to offer in that regard, and I think it's important for them to know that, that nobody is above the law in that regard, I was called on the carpet today because I hadn't turned in one of my receipts for my credit cards, so y'all don't miss a beat, and so I'm going to have to go back and try and dig that one up somewhere and keep Lady from emailing me again, asking me to get on the ball, so we, we have a great financial department and hats off to you folks, but to all of our employees as well, too. With that then, we'll move on to appointments of boards and commissions, Board of Zoning Appeals has a vacancy occurring in District Six, do you have anyone to nominate this evening?
Yes, I have spoken and checked with, verified with Mr. Tarwater, and he said he would be very happy to serve another term.
Mr. Tarwater comes as a recommendation, do I hear a second?
Second.
Have a motion in a second, any further comment in that regard? Ms. Adams?
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes.
Recreation Association Board of Trustees has two appointments that will be expiring at the end of this year, one in District Three, that would be Janet Burton's term, do you have a representative to replace or to renominate Ms. Burton?
Not at this time, Ms. Burton is not going to serve again.
Okay, all right. The at-large nomination, I'd like to recommend Ms. Jennifer Humphries, I am sorry, I do not have a bio this evening on Ms. Humphries, but she is a resident of the downtown area, actually lives on Davenport Street, so she is one of my neighbors, she has two young children that currently participate in our cultural arts and recreation programs, Ms. Humphries has agreed to serve, to serve on the Recreation Association Board of Trustees, I'd like to nominate Ms. Humphries.
Second.
Have a motion in a second in that regard, any further comment, questions? Hearing them, Ms. Adams?
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes.
Counsel, we'll move to items of old business this evening, the first of which is the second and final reading of ordinance number twenty-seven dash two thousand and fourteen, this is an ordinance to provide for the annexation of a portion of property owned by Douglas Copeland and Carolyn Crandall located at sixteen eighty Gibbs Shoals Road by one hundred percent petition and to establish his zoning classification of R-12 for said property. Mr. Pace?
Thank you, Mayor, Council, on November seventeenth, Plan and Commission did conduct a public hearing in regards to this property, no one spoke in favor or in opposition to it, and the Plan and Commission recommended unanimously to approve the zoning classification of R-12 for this problem.
Counsel, entertain a motion for the purpose of discussion.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, floor is open for discussion or questions? Hearing them, Ms. Adams?
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes.
Counsel, we have the second and final reading of ordinance twenty-nine dash two thousand and fourteen, an ordinance to provide for the annexation of a portion of property owned by Charles Smith Jr. located on Highway one-on-one South by one hundred percent petition and to establish his own classification of R-12 for said property. Mr. Pace?
Yes, Mayor and Council, public hearing was held on November the seventeenth, no one spoke in favor or in opposition to the request, and the Plan and Commission did unanimously recommend for approval of R-12 zoning for this problem.
Entertain a motion to receive?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second, floor is open for discussion. Questions? Comment? Ms. Adams?
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes.
Second and final reading of ordinance thirty dash two thousand and fourteen, an ordinance to provide for the annexation of a portion of property owned by Velda Aston located on Highway one-on-one North by one hundred percent petition and to establish his zoning classification of R-12 for said property. Mr. Pace?
Yes, Mayor and Council, on November seventeenth, Plan and Commission did conduct public hearing, no one spoke in favor or in opposition to the request, Plan and Commission unanimously recommends R-12 zoning for this problem.
Entertain a motion to receive?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second, floor is open for discussion. Questions? Comment? Ms. Adams?
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes.
Second and final reading of ordinance thirty-one dash two thousand and fourteen, an ordinance authorizing the conveyance of any and all interest in certain real property in the City of Greer. Counsel, you are aware that this is a quick clean deed, this is the four-foot wide, one-hundred-and-sixty-foot-long strip that we discussed at the meeting last week, is in regard to the corner of Wade Hampton and Forest Street, property owned by Mr. Benson. Entertain a motion to receive?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second, any additional information from administrator or Mr. Pace in that regard?
No, sir, no additional information.
Having no additional information, entertain a motion to receive, we've already done that. We won't have to do it again, then. Any questions, comments, or observations in regards to the second and final reading of ordinance number thirty-one dash two thousand and fourteen? Hearing them, Ms. Adams?
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes.
Counsel, we'll move then to items of new business this evening, the first of which is the Municipal Association's two thousand and fifteen advocacy initiatives, this is a resolution that the Municipal Association has asked that we adopt in regards to the two thousand and fifteen advocacy initiatives, this is the first year in a long time, but I have not been involved in that from the board level, so we will let our board representative, Mr. Driggers, bring us up to speed in that regard.
Members of council, the, as, as you are aware, the Municipal Association does provide advocacy services to all member towns and cities statewide, and as a result of that, they, they held a series of meetings across the state and developed their, their initiatives for this year, those are defined and identified in the, in the proclamation, the resolution, they are asking our member cities across the state as they begin their lobbying efforts on our behalf in Columbia, that, that we support those statewide, and that is the resolution that you have before you, I would ask your consideration for adopting that resolution.
Counsel, the proclamation reads as such, proclamation for cities and towns to adopt the Municipal Association two thousand and fifteen advocacy initiatives, and whereas cities and towns in South Carolina are the government closest to the people, providing the core service residents and businesses demand for an exceptional quality of life, and whereas hundreds of municipal officials from across the state met in the fall of two thousand and fourteen over a two-month period to identify challenges at the municipal level, whereas these challenges can be addressed through a comprehensive approach that includes changes to state law, training from experts, research into possible solutions, and collaboration with stakeholders, whereas the Municipal Association identified five advocacy initiatives based on the feedback from local officials, including clear white, open government, fund services, and increase efficiencies, and fix roads, whereas dilapidated structures pose a safety problem and threat to municipalities of all sizes, whereas meeting agendas are an essential tool for the orderly, efficient, and effective handling of the public's, of public's business, whereas cities and towns Whereas cities and towns need dependable and consistent revenue sources to support the efficient and effective delivery of municipal services that residents and businesses demand for a positive quality of life and economic prosperity. And whereas saving tax dollars by providing effective and efficient services to residents and businesses is every municipality's goal. And whereas repairing and maintaining existing roads and infrastructure is about encouraging and supporting statewide economic development with infrastructure that can accommodate new industry and support existing industry. Therefore, the city of Greer fully supports the agenda set forth by the Municipal Association Board of Directors for City and Town Councils to govern effectively and efficiently. Let it be therefore resolved that the City Council of Greer affirms on this day, December 9th, 2014, to support the Municipal Association 2015 Advocacy Initiatives for the state's 270 cities and towns. Do I hear a motion to receive?
No motion. Second.
Have a motion and a second in that regard. Any comments or discussion?
I have one or two. Mr. Driggers, or you probably would know this, too. The dilapidated structures has been on the agenda for a while now.
A while.
What's the holdup here?
They successfully got legislation through, if I had it correct, through the House of Representatives, and they had a holdup in the Senate. They are, they feel very confident that the Senate version in the new session will be supported, but because they are in a new session, it will require a new bill to go to the House as well. It just, they really got down to the last couple of days, week of the legislative session, and were not able to get the final version through the Senate.
This is the second one that went to the Senate, wasn't it?
Well, it's been the same initiative all along, but it's taken several years to get versions of that that would be agreeable in both the House and the Senate. That's been obviously the issue.
Just as an observation, Mr. Bettis, this has fairly unilateral support, to the point that its downfall has been that it has been used as sort of a political leverage tool, and the Senate has tied this up, I guess, the last two years, as there has been some debate about other pieces of legislation depending on the outcome of this particular one. I think the staff feels very strongly that there is enough support in both the House and Senate to pass it this year and to move forward. That indication that Mr. Driggers has given is, has, we can never assume anything, but at this point, it looks like that there is pretty broad support, and hopefully it will come off our plate at some time, Mr. Bettis. With the, whereas saving taxpayer dollars by providing efficient services, is there any specifics to that? I mean, nobody would disagree with that.
No, and I certainly think what that is the preamble to is the local government fund and the position at the state level of saying that for us to be able to provide those services effectively and efficiently requires the resources that we're obligated to local government.
Well, I can read that into the one above it, that you need dependable and consistent revenue sources.
Exactly. I mean, that is what that is in reference to, obviously.
Well, the other one is about, just about efficiencies. I didn't know if they were planning to roll out some new program of municipal-supported stuff, you know, that would be cheaper in bulk.
No, sir. That's not the case.
And I would just say about the road and infrastructure, that I would hope that their tack is gonna be going after what's already supposed to be done with tax dollars that's not being done, rather than coming to us and saying, "You need to pass this tax."
I think the, as we talked earlier during the workshop session, there have been two approaches to responding to the state relative to the road issue, one by the South Carolina Association of Counties, and that approach has been no, no, no. Those roads are not to be conveyed to local government under any circumstances because they do not believe that there is a reliable funding source. The Municipal Association has taken the approach of saying, "We're open to review and discussion of how that could possibly work and under what circumstances that could work." And I think that has been the approach so far of instead of saying no, it is very consciously going in and saying how. So they have taken no position to say that we support that, they're simply taking the position of saying, "How would you propose that this would be done?" Because the position is, there is a need for improved road infrastructure in South Carolina. Cities and towns are affected by that greatly as well. We do believe that that is, it is a state issue, but we also recognize that they're gonna look at ways to resolve that as a state issue, and what are those impacts to us as local government? And as we were indicating earlier, there very well could be streets that are in the state maintenance system that are located within our municipality, that it may make really good sense that those streets would be municipal streets, just because of how they're used and where they're located. So for us to say no, under any circumstances, we just don't think is the most appropriate response. But if there is gonna be some shift in the responsibility for maintenance of those, what is the funding mechanism that goes with that?
So the main thrust of this is going to be, it's gonna be, who's gonna be responsible? Not necessarily, why are you not fully funding what you're supposed to be funding now?
That is correct. I think, I think-
I don't understand why they don't go after, I mean, everything you read shows you that the money that's collected is there, it's just not put where it's supposed to be put.
And I think that would certainly be part of the Municipal Association's position, is that do what needs to be done. And if there are going to be changes in the system, we very much want to be at the table to discuss how those changes may occur versus those changes being handed down to us through state legislation. Their position in this is that, yes, there needs to be improvements to our infrastructure. And if you are proposing to make changes, we want to be involved in those decisions. And I think that's why the testimony that was made this past week, that if you're going to reconfigure county C-Fund committees, then those C-Fund committees must have municipal representation on them. And the committee supported that. Now, what will ultimately happen, we don't know. I mean, as they work through this process, but we are advocating that municipalities have as much at stake in this road infrastructure issue as anyone, as the state, as the county, as municipalities, and that we need to be involved in the solution that's ultimately achieved, whatever that may be.
Nobody at the Municipal Association knows anything about the governor's secret plan, did it hurt anything about it?
Not that I have been, not that it's been shared with me.
I just wonder what her position's gonna be on all that.
Yeah.
Okay. I think the other thing that we need to be aware of, and I think part of the reason that the issue addressing roads, at least from the Municipal Association, is the most efficient and effective way to do that, I do believe that you're gonna see a push, particularly some of the larger municipalities in the state this year, to revitalize this idea or to revive the idea of municipal governments having a local option sales tax. Greenville in particular feels very strongly that their community would support a sales tax that would be dedicated to road improvement. Other larger communities still feel the same way, and I think you'll probably see that as a directed effort from their lobbyists. So we're just trying to get rid of cars on Gibbs. They wanna charge you a fee and bring your automobile. They're addressing their road improvement needs in a variety of different ways.
Have a motion and a second. Any further comments or discussion in that regard? Ms. Adams?
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. First reading of ordinance number 33-2014, an ordinance amending the city of Greer's own code to add Section 617, donation bins, including the purpose and intent, definitions, general requirements, and conflicts, and to amend Section 8, 5-2 to provide requirements for signage on donation bins. Mr. Pace?
Thank you, Mayor, Council, again. During our council retreat this year, earlier, you had tasked me with several responsibilities of drafting possible ordinances in regards to several different items, and donation bins being one of those items. I'm finally bringing you some proposed zoning changes that would otherwise regulate donation bins within the city limits of Greer. After conducting public hearings and one-on-one communications with charitable organizations that do have bins throughout the city, namely Miracle Hill Industries and Goodwill Industries in regards to how they're receptive to this type of regulation, I got assurances from both, and one of those, in public hearing, in support of legislation that would regulate the placement and use of these bins. It was therefore that through that process, I developed this proposed zoning change to you. It does not restrict uses for profits or nonprofits. They're both allowed within the city. However, there is some requirements and fees would be implemented, and two, and renewal fees involved on a year-to-year basis, requiring permission of owners of property for the placement of these things and spacing of donation bins throughout the city and how close they can be to another bin. Again, relying on some of the concerns that they had, we did develop this, the Plank Commission did hear it, and the public hearing, no one spoke in opposition to this request, and again, some spoke in favor of the request. So, Mayor, I would bring this before you, as a recommendation from the Plank Commission, unanimously approve the legislation.
Council, for the purpose of discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Floor is open for discussion and questions of Mr. Pace.
I had a couple. The recycled roll-off containers?
Yes.
They would be, I guess, regulated by the same for the bins? Would be any difference?
The roll-offs are the larger containers that are primarily used in recycling, but again, they could be converted into donation bins, and in fact, that's what a recycle is. So, yeah, we would look at those, however, through our materials recovery facilities, the MRS, that's also defined, it would allow us to continue those type operations in different locations in the city.
So if someone has a regular bin now, it wouldn't benefit them any by going to get the larger bin?
It could. It could. I don't see that happening. They haven't any requested. And then, as far as the bin itself, you know, we are asking that to be regulated by size toward the end of the ordinance, all set. And again, that was with input from those charitable donating organizations in regards to that.
So it's gonna be $200 regardless of the size of the bin?
Yes, sir.
I'm just scared people are gonna go and get the big one.
Well, yeah, that would encourage me to put as big one as I could.
Put the big one in instead of the regular size one.
Again, the big one is for recycling.
Yeah.
Of those items.
Did you, when you did one-on-ones with these organizations, was 200, was that?
They were comfortable with that fee, yes, sir. They felt it would weed out undesirables that do this type operation. Also, if you've been to any of our shopping centers lately, you've seen a plethora of these things in the shopping centers and have become more abundant on a regular basis. We tried to regulate them by policy of just stating, you know, we require the for-profits to have business licenses and require letters from property owners, but again, these things keep popping up all the time. Without something to actually enforce this, it's hard to get out there and regulate it.
So assuming that Greer Plaza is one parcel, they'd likely be allowed to have one?
One with a spacing somewhere, not exactly sure. I think it was 200 feet.
500.
500 feet, there it is, yes. 500 feet. So larger shopping centers, where you can separate them out by 500 feet, we would permit that.
Well, that would be against C there, wouldn't it? Any single parcel can only have one donation bin.
Nor, I don't know, the attorney called that. It could, yeah.
I noticed that, too. And it also says something about making sure that everybody that's the owner and the property signs off on it. I mean, for instance, like, I mean, isn't the, where's this big issue that, or the big place that we're having these issues right now, the kind of warranted, is it Walmart? Primero?
In any shopping center has, even Target shopping center has probably six or seven in that shopping center. And they get clustered up, or sometimes they get pushed away to the side. We have nothing that regularly enforces us routinely inspecting them to make sure that they're maintained and dumped. A lot of times, they become dumping grounds themselves for undesirable goods that you may have, or someone has, just placing outside the container. And we have nothing really that will allow us to go in and enforce that. A lot of them, we don't even have the ownership.
And they haven't necessarily gotten permission to drop the boxes?
No, sir.
They're just dropping them out there.
They're just dropping them.
I bring that up because I just believe that it'll be a real challenge to get permission, for instance, from whoever that huge leasing company is that rents that space to Walmart, unless they own the parcel. I mean, I think it'll be a real challenge for them to drop that donation box, and I know that's probably an important source of these items for these nonprofits or whoever that happens to be, just because of the amount of traffic that flows through that, through that shopping center parking lot. And to limit it to just one for that amount of, for those businesses that are in there, I mean, and how many different shops outside of Walmart do you have there? And Greer Plaza is another example, where you've got tons of, tons of blacktop space and a lot of, a lot of businesses. So I don't know, I mean, the way it's worded is real restrictive and seems to limit the opportunities for, you know, more than one bin there. I can't speak to intent, but I'm wondering if B means that if there are two parcels that you can put single donation bins on, you couldn't put the two bins on the two inside corners of that piece of property where they were basically within 500 feet of each other? But I think you make a good point. I'm not sure that it's in our best interest to try and spread them out, because if we've got a place like Walmart or one of the other shopping centers where you typically see multiple bins of some kind, I'm not wondering if our intent is to allow more than one, that they shouldn't actually all be together.
that they shouldn't actually all be together, because at that point in time, you can contain the nuisance piece of it probably better than you could having them spread out.
I'm sort of thinking of a designated area where they would, where they'd be set up. I mean, if it, if it was more than one, and again, you know, back to, you know, back to what I was saying, if you got the permission from whoever the landowner was, that they said, yeah, hey, we, you know, we can see three or four of these things sitting down here in this particular area, and we think it would be a win-win, and then, yeah, it's a good fit. But again, it can't get outrageous to where they're just, you know, like Mr. Pace is saying, they're just dropping them all over the parking lot randomly, and then there's, you know, trash being dumped there, and nobody's maintaining it, and nobody knows who owns it.
Are you, like we're contractors, are we going to issue some type of a sticker to go on these things, so that Chuck or whoever rides by can see if they've got it?
Well, we'll have the digital records here, but we're not creating any type of device for, or have part of any device for those to be placed on them. We would just take into consideration that for parcel A, Goodwill has permission, they have the permit, and if that container becomes damaged, they can swap it without any, any situation with us being having them be resolved.
I don't really like the idea of a bunch of them being together. It's, yeah, it looks kind of hideous when they're all there. And I guess I always, maybe I go through the wrong stores, but I always find the ones with the old mattresses out beside it, or someone throws all their wire hangers on the ground there.
Well, and what if, what if Goodwill gets there on day one and ties up every, every spot in the city, and basically closes everybody else out, you know? That's not fair.
And that's the problem, is that's because so much of what they receive could come from these bins. I mean, I don't, did they give you any of that information, they say, hey, we rely heavily on the bins, or they're more of a nuisance to us, or they're, we can take them or leave them, or what was their?
Their overall statement to me, from, I will primarily say from Goodwill, was even totally banning would not be in opposition to that. That has created, through the for-profits group, a situation that has hurt them dramatically, and that that's why we're proposing signage also to be placed on these donation bins to identify whether it is for-profit or a not-for-profit group, so that you, as a consumer, can make a reasonable decision where to place your goods, and hopefully comply with RRS regulations and claiming your deductions at bin of the year.
Now, it says the signage, the signed copy may include only the name of the charity or the organization sponsoring the collection, but then it also must contain a sign saying whether or not the donations are for, for-profit or nonprofit organization, is that correct?
Both of those statements would need to be on the box? Yes, sir.
Well, if it's like you're saying, it's a situation where it's, it's not a big source of product for these, for these businesses, and it's not a, it's not something that they find desirable, like you said, if it's something they can take or leave, then it's, then these can be more of an eyesore, and it sounds like an issue that, you know, that's long overdue to be addressed.
And for-profit organizations, we'll tell you, they are very profitable also. They do, from reports I've heard, they, they are financially gaining substantially from these. I don't know if they're reporting all that in lieu of us receiving our business license, however, without some auditing going on.
Well, I, I think, I hope that we'll find that, once we establish a process, and certainly a annual filing fee, that we're going to cut down on the number of these units in some regard in that fashion, because I just can't help but imagine that there's going to be some that are not going to comply with that. Now, what will be the process to deal with those?
The ones that do not-
Existing, existing donation boxes that, that don't comply.
This would give us authority to remove those box, physically remove those boxes from the location. We would, again, notify the property owner of the bin, if it is noted, who to notify, that we have collected that bin, and you'd like to receive it back, there's a $200 fee for receiving it back, and that we would have the authority to empty that container in an appropriate manner, if it did have contents within it. So we would not be storing goods as well as a bin, because you'd be, well, maybe you wouldn't be shocked at what I've heard that's inside those bins, when they do clean them out.
Or who's inside.
Yeah. I think sometimes picking garbage up would be a cleaner thing than picking up goods out of a bin.
I, I think it's a good ordinance, I support the concept. I do think there's a danger of one organization scooping up all locations, and I would like to see you clarify, one parcel 500 feet, I mean, like Greer Plaza, you could actually put two 500 feet apart on that one parcel, and it wouldn't be a clutter, you know?
Right.
So I would like to see some clarification on that.
Again, Mr. Bettis, I'd like to revisit this idea that what we may want to at least consider would be that any single parcel could contain, say, three donation bins, but that we defined that there has to be some sort of designated area or something.
Yeah, I would rather they all be together, I think, somewhere, rather than spread apart. And that would, that, that could, I guess that could be the, that could go to this process of having to have the owner's permission, possibly.
You, in the past, that's one thing I've asked, that when they do come in and ask what's needed, and when I get the letter from the property owner, is where is the placement going to be on that property? Not that we dictate where it's going to be, we just want to know where it's going to be. Is it going to impede parking? Is it going to impede traffic, or any issues like that, that we want to know about?
Did we happen to talk to any property owners, do they see that it's a benefit to them to have these things in their parking lot? For instance, I'm going to the grocery store, I want to drop off my donations to Goodwill or what have you. I mean, do they see that as a benefit, or neutral, or a?
Have not had that discussion with them, for them to say that, to be honest with you.
Well, they have the option of turning them down altogether.
They do, if they know it's happening.
Well, what he's saying is they're dropping them off, and they don't even know who they are.
Right.
Yeah. I mean, there's organizations that they're claiming that they support, and if you check that support, you will find that they're minimal, that they do support that. And I think they're going in and advertising, and that's why they're placing them there, if they even ask that question at all. I think when you move into an area and you find a multitude of those units, they haven't asked, they've seen one or two, and said, oh, that's okay, go ahead and drop three or four.
Maybe it would be appropriate to determine how many bins per parking square footage, you know, that would kind of, then you would say, okay, this one's big enough for two, that one's big enough for three, you know, that sort of thing.
I mean, any recommendations we'll take as amendment, or anything that I would have to change, we'll have to go back to the planning commission.
I suspect it would be more appropriate if council would make amendments, otherwise it has to go back to the planning commission.
Mayor, I'll defer to whatever you think would be the appropriate language there.
Well, I, I would like us to revisit this, I agree, one per parcel of property might become restrictive if you had somebody that was well-established to go in and get the pre-mo spots. I mean, that, that does occur to me. I also think that if we're going to have multiple bins in one location, that we, that we, I think we'd benefit from having them, having them all in one location. And I think the property owners would appreciate that as well, too. I suspect that it's an issue for the property owner to notify what they perceive to be a nonprofit organization to remove their box from their, their property. They may be hesitant about it, but if the ordinance has some teeth in that regard, I think they may find it more palatable. I think it may be in our best interest for us to give this some additional thought and consideration, and seek possibly some advice from our staff to offer an amendment that would be palatable to them and workable as well. In that regard, we may, may be better served to, to hold this matter over for some further discussion.
I think you have a good idea. We had a motion?
Second.
We had a motion, well, we had a motion from?
Earlier?
Yes.
I have a, yeah, I have Ms. Albert, and then Mr. Bettis.
Second. To adopt.
For discuss.
Ms. Albert, with a motion to adopt, we will entertain a motion to change that to a motion to hold over, and Mr. Bettis can then second that to give us some more time for consideration, if that would be agreeable?
Okay, yes.
Amendment. Amendment motion to hold over.
Mend the motion then to hold over with a second from Mr. Bettis. Okay?
What?
We have a motion to hold over then, with a second by Mr. Bettis. Any further comments or discussion in that regard? Having amended it, Ms. Adams?
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes. First in, first reading of ordinance 32-2014, an ordinance to change the zoning classification of property owned by Arthur State Bank located at 3271 Brushy Creek Road, from I-1 to C-2. Mr. Pace?
Mayor Council, I did receive today, excuse me, at 11:35 this morning, email requesting the rezoning of this property to be withheld, or to be held over. The project that was planned for this was for a possible damp studio to be located on portion of this property. That obviously is not going to transpire, and therefore, I would request that you vote to hold this over. Any action in regards to it could tie this property up for one year, if you decided to deny a request that was recommended by the planning commission, as this was at the last regular scheduled meeting.
We would actually request that you would table the motion indefinitely. And that, in essence, would kill the motion by taking no action.
Okay. By show of hand, is an owner or the representative of the owner of the property here this evening? Let it be noted, no one indicated, so I'll entertain a motion to table, first reading of ordinance 32-14.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further comment or questions in that regard? Ms. Adams?
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor Council.
Thank you, sir. Council on Executive Session, we have one personnel matter to consider and two contractual matters to consider. Do I hear a motion to adjourn to executive session?
So move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Ms. Adams?
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes.
Sorry.
In executive session, we've taken no action in regards to one personnel matter or two contractual matters. Do I hear a motion to come out of executive session?
Time motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Oh, God.
Ms. Adams?
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Daner?
Yes.
Before we adjourn tonight, I want to thank Ms. Adams for filling in for us the last couple
of meetings.
No problem.
Appreciate, appreciate your help in that regard, and I'm sure I'll be seeing most of, not all of y'all between now and then, but wish you a Merry Christmas as well, too. And with that?
And a happy day.